Hello.
I may not read it. Yes.
Hello and welcome. I call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for November 16th. The pledge will be led by two students from North Main, Mr. Coto. Do we have another principal to take Mr. Coto's? No, where is it? I think he went to get the two students.
Where did he go?
He didn't want to bring them into the room early for fear that they would get nervous.
He's so thoughtful.
Here he is. And here they are. Take it away, Mr. Coto.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dan Israti always wants me to read the mission statement. "We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens." Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We now go into the school board recognition part of our meeting, after which we will have a short recess, so those who want to depart may depart. So I turn it over to Harry. Harry LaFevere. And let's all, Board, if we may, sit down there in the front seat.
So I want to read something.
Oh, you're going to read something?
I am, but you can sit over there. Each year, school board members put their name on a ballot and seek an opportunity to represent their district and community. Every year, the state of New York sets aside a week for board recognition. This is a great time to focus on the crucial roles an elected board trustee plays in our community and schools. They are extraordinary people who voluntarily tackle the enormous job of governing school districts. Their actions and decisions affect the present and future lives of our children. In honor of board recognition, Central Office has made a donation to the Monroe Woodbury, to the Monroe Senior Center. We will be hosting a Valentine's luncheon for our seniors in honor of our school board. You're welcome. I'm also going to read the proclamation. Whereas each school board recognition week is observed by more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout the Empire State. And whereas our state's public education system is designed to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to society and the ever-changing world. And whereas members of local school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education. Recognizing that all children can be successful learners, especially education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas, local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district by working closely with parents, educational professionals, and community members to create the educational vision we all hold for today's students and those in the future. And whereas, the members of New York State's local school boards respond to the educational needs of the communities they serve and help ensure the solid foundation of our school system, in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state's educational system and improve future prospects for our children. And whereas, during the week of October 24th through the 28th, special activities and programs will be held in communities across New York State in observance of School Board Recognition Week, and it is fitting to join in acknowledging the commitment and contributions of members of local school boards. Now therefore, this is written by Mario Cuomo of the state of New... Andrew, sorry, did I say Mario? I guess I just pre...I just told everybody how old I am. Yes. Now therefore, I, Andrew Cuomo, Governor of the state of New York, do hereby proclaim October 24th through the 28th as School Board Recognition Week. And unfortunately, we did not have a board meeting, so we move it to November. So without further ado, I'm going to allow Mr. Fevere to begin today's festivities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez. As Mrs. Rodriguez said, we're recognizing the school board tonight at this board meeting because during the month of October, actual school board recognition month, we did not have a board meeting. A couple of other things that she mentioned, this is...the members of the school board are volunteers. They're elected officials representing the school district, representing the students in the Monroe Woodbury Central School District. They live and breathe the mission statement that Mr. Hubert read a few minutes ago. And even though he may have joked about Mr. Israti requiring him to read it or asking him to read it, it's read at every board meeting as a reminder to each of the board members and to the people in the audience, the importance of the job that they do. I have a kind of interesting perspective on board recognition. I'm also a board member. This is my 42nd year in education. I've been a teacher and administrator in a lot of districts. I'm interim here. This is my second year here. I retired nine years ago. I've worked with a lot of different boards of education. And I have to tell you that this is one of the best I've ever worked with. They are amazing. They really, really put their heart into what they do. And Dan is a welcome addition. After the last board meeting, you saw that we included a student representative, added a student representative to the Board of Education. Very, very important component that's added. This is Dan over here. So even though this is only a second board meeting, hey, you're getting recognition right away. This is like instantaneous. Anyway. The board members put a lot of work into everything that they do. You don't want to hear me talk, you want to hear the students. So I'm going to ask that Mrs. Brock bring up the students from Sapphire who will be recognizing and making their presentation to the members of the board.
Good evening, everyone. And special thank you to Mrs. Rodriguez, Mr. Hubert, the Board of Education members, as well as Central Administration. With me tonight, I have some of my fantastic Sapphire students. We have with us Jake, James, Madison, Mateo, Colby, Carter, and Connor. So can everyone turn around and wave to my friends? My friends and I would like to say a very special thank you for all the support that you show us at Sapphire, as well as all the other students at Monroe Woodbury. Without your support and your guidance, our children wouldn't be here right this moment, being able to share with you something that they made just for you. Inside your bag, everyone will receive this wonderful gift from our students that they made. I'm just going to read the poem. "These aren't just five little snowmen, as anyone can see. I made them with my hand, which is part of me. Now each year, when you look and stare, I hope you think of me." And on the back, it says Sapphire, 2016. So we hope you enjoy your gifts and remember us at Sapphire.
Thank you, Mrs. Brock and the students from Sapphire Elementary School. Next up, we have Mr. Berger and Mrs. Ricker with students from Smith Clove Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. We can't thank the Board of Education and our Central Administration enough for all that you do for our students. You have been so supportive, helping to make these early years for our Smith Clovers so special. And using Mrs. Rodriguez's vision for the school year, we wanted to instill the virtue of hope in our students. So we came up with the idea to involve our students in providing hope to other children in the world. Mrs. Ricker, our assistant principal, did an amazing job in organizing our UNICEF initiative at Smith Clove, and she's going to explain it a little bit more to you.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Good evening, everyone. I just want to read a quote that kind of encapsulizes everything we believe in Monroe Woodbury. "Never underestimate the power of dreams and the influence of the human spirit. We are all the same in this notion. The potential for greatness lives within each and every one of us." In keeping with Elsie's theme, like Mr. Berger just said, the theme of hope, we wanted to instill compassion and empathy in our students by nurturing tomorrow's generation with kindness and hope. Since Halloween is pretty much a national holiday at the kindergarten and first grade level, we thought we could tie in excitement of Halloween with the caring of others. We then looked into different fundraising opportunities that would incorporate our students, the PTA, and the community. Our PTA is actually with us tonight, so they need to come up here. We have Bernie Vega, as well as Mrs. Shannon Duncan. And this whole thing could not have been possible without the support of our PTA. So trick-or-treat for UNICEF, the United Nations International Children's Emergency Fund, fit all the particulars we were looking for. It was especially important to us to have our students help other children, children in many ways that were just like them. Here's a short, two-minute video about the cause our students, parents, and community rallied so enthusiastically around and in turn received tremendous generosity and support.
This means that all day long, most children sit either in the dirt or on hard snack floors, trying their best to concentrate on lessons.
In as far as education is concerned, the learner is more comfortable sitting on desks than on the floor. The problems arise when they want to write. They use their knees as desks, which leads to poor handwriting.
The problem arises when we're sitting, and when we try to write our papers every day, and that wastes a lot of our time. It's distracting, and it makes it hard to be well in school.
On top of this, sitting on the floor makes their clothes dirty faster than if they were sitting at the desk.
It's hard for them to afford soap, especially if they have to wash their clothes every day. When their clothes are dirty, they don't come to school.
But things are finally changing for kids here. Just a few years ago, while visiting Malawi, Lawrence O'Donnell saw firsthand the need for educational supplies. Wanting to help, he contacted UNICEF, who contacted him with a local manufacturer, and they were able to furnish a single classroom in just one week. Thanks to the partnership with the US Fund for UNICEF and NSNBC, school desks are now being delivered to children all across Malawi for the Kind Fund, Kids in Need of Action. The Kind Fund has raised more than $5.6 million, and by the end of this year, the program will enable UNICEF to reach more than 220,000 students. But beyond that...
So this video was shown to every class at Smith Clove. It had a profound effect on our students. They were so eager to help the children of Malawi and couldn't wait to get their UNICEF boxes filled with donations on Halloween as they trick-or-treated. They wanted to contribute so much to the Kind Fund, funds that would help buy desks and also provide academic scholarships for Malawian girls. From the bottom of our hearts, Smith Clove Elementary School and the Smith Clove PTA are donating our UNICEF funds to, on behalf of the Board of Education. For all that you do, we appreciate everything. The amount that we raised was $2,357.57. With the money that we raised, we can provide children of Malawi 40 desks, and we can send six Malawian girls to school on academic scholarships.
Sorry, no other schools are waiting. We do have one other thing for...these were the boxes that our children, our students used when going trick-or-treating. We have created a UNICEF box for our Board of Education members as well. On the front, there is a quote from Helen Keller that reads, "Hope sees the invisible, feels the intangible, and achieves the impossible." And inside your UNICEF...UNICEF boxes are many different types of things, and I know a lot of groups are...schools are waiting. There is a hope pennant that our kindergartners and first graders created with, under the guidance of our incredible art teacher, Mrs. Walker. It's a pennant that reads "hope," and on there, truly out of the mouths of babes, are quotes from our kindergartners and first graders, the verb tenses, nothing has been altered, so it is exactly, you know, the things that they say and that we hear on an everyday basis. A couple of things. "I hope my school stays bully-free, but not fun-free." There's quotes in here. "I hope my dad can drive the bus." There's lots of fun things. It is very, very genuine, so enjoy those. We have a couple of cookies in here as well, just again, representing our UNICEF initiative. There's some UNICEF cookies and some hope cookies. There's some other goodies in there for you. And again, we have here, from Smith Clove, helping hand out boxes tonight, we have Carter Greenberg, Rosemarie Reyes, Ethan Churchella, Avery Churchella, Matthew Lavagat, Drew Aran, Leah Woods, Alana Telzmatik, and Alice Castillo. So we are very thankful that they can be here. And in closing, we do want to, again, thank Mrs. Walker, our art teacher, for all of the hard work that she put in with our classes. We want to thank the PTA and local businesses that supported this initiative. And again, to thank you to the Board of Education and Central Administration for providing hope to our students here at Monroe Woodbury and setting them up for future successes. So from the bottom of our hearts, at Smith Clove, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Berger and Mrs. Ricker, and the students of Smith Clove for that most generous donation to UNICEF project. And at this time, we have the students from North Main, our host school tonight. And Mr. Coto, do you want to introduce?
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the Board of Education, Central Office, Mrs. Rodriguez to North Main. I have no script today. That's probably a good thing, because it would probably be too long if I did. The song that you're going to hear, I'm going to be...I'm going to use a cliche for a second here. There's really nothing better than a gift of song. When we knew we had the board meeting here this year, it went to Ms. Murray very quickly. That might have been because Mr. Kravitz put that little birdie in my ear there, but Ms. Murray and I spoke, and then she ran with it. So you're going to hear our select chorus today. I spoke with the students before we came in today, and I gave them a little background on the Board of Education. We talked about how dedicated you are, we talked about how much time you give, we talked about the hours, the late nights, and then I told them you don't get paid. And they kind of looked at me like, "Really? You think so, Mr. Coto?" And it was eye-opening. I told them that you do it basically to see the smiles on their faces and the smiles you're going to see tonight as they sing. Dan Willis came to me earlier and asked me a question. I don't know if he's going to do it tonight or not, but I'm going to say it anyway. He asked me, "Why do you get up and go to North Main every morning, Mr. Coto?" And I said, at first, my first response was, "Because my wife won't let me stay home." That was my first response. My second response was more true and more from the heart, which is, "What other job can you come to where you see 550 smiling children all day long, you get to interact with them, and you see 50 to 75 smiling adults walking around the building all day long that truly love what they do?" There is no other job like that, and North Main is such a special place. And we thank you for coming tonight. And Ms. Murray, it's all yours. I leaned over to Mr. Masano in the middle of that, and I said, "This is what every day is like at North Main. These are my days, Mr. Masano." I can't tell you what he said back to me. They also have some cellophane hearts that were produced in art class. Each of the students have one for the board members, as well as the council, just because of the song, "Seasons of Love," from the heart. I see Mrs. Rodriguez, she's got tears in her eyes. Yes! We did it. I want to thank Mrs. Murray, Mrs. Terrello, and Mrs. McCabe, who's behind the scenes someplace, for volunteering to help out. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coto, Mrs. Murray, and the students of North Main. And thank you, Dan Willis, for asking that question and not asking Mr. Coto if he was going to sing with the students. Next, Mrs. Turleki and Mr. Barone will present with the students of Central Valley their presentation to the members of the Board of Education.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you to all of you for everything that you do. I don't think people realize how much time and effort you give behind the scenes. It's not easy to go to work every day and then come here and volunteer your time, but you do it. And I know that sometimes there are some marathon meetings for you, and I'm sure that you get very tired and you'd like to go home, but our students made something for you that we hope will remind you of why you're there and how grateful we are for everything that you do for our students. And I already have it arranged that this will be hanging on the wall directly above where the video...where Noreen is in the Edge Center, so that on those long, long nights when you're just about had meeting out, we hope that you will look at what our students have created for you and remember how grateful we are to all of you. Mr. Barone?
Yes, with us this evening, we have two students, representatives of the ARCLUB, Central Elementary School ARCLUB. Two by the way, who are the direction and guidance of Doreen Jajia, our art teacher. And actually, tonight, we have two members of our ARCLUB, Dr. Mary Pritchard, and we have Brandon Nuttlesil, who is a resident in Garbo. So, just to say, we're all going to be open.
Thank you, students from Central Valley Elementary School. Mr. Judice and Mr. Martin will now have the students from Pine Tree Elementary Mr. Judice and Mr. Martin will now have the students from Pine Tree Elementary present the board with some goodie bags.
Good evening, everybody. It is my pleasure to stand here as your principal of Pine Tree, and on behalf of the Pine Tree faculty and staff and our entire learning community, we wanna thank you for your volunteerism and dedicating your time and long hours to serve our community, serve our students, and because every moment you spend helps them grow and become better students and better people. So, our students are here. We have Madison Gallinger, we have Faith Zollo, we have Alana Millelo, Emma Sherbo, Caitlin McCann, Catherine Sikorsky, Maya Telsmanek, Kayla Hamid, Brianna Rivera, James Petcove, Matthew Rucker, Rachel Rucker, Samantha Schubert, and Reese Dolan. They are members of our cast and crew of our Annie production, which will be taking place tomorrow through Saturday, and they are all here. Let's give them a nice round of applause. We wanted to highlight this wonderful drama production that we are putting on, and I challenged the kids to do a couple things for me. What can we do to really highlight this awesome experience that you support? You, by supporting the Drama Club and supporting the arts, you allow this to take place. So the kids have given three things in each bag, a t-shirt that you see them wearing. They also, there's also an autographed picture of one of the cast members, and we also have a letter that was written to each of you. And the letter reads as follows. "November 10th, 2016. Dear Board of Education Members, we wanted to thank you for your support of the arts in Monroe Woodbury Central Schools. At Pine Tree, we are putting on a play, Annie Junior, with our Drama Club. We are learning to become actors and actresses and improving our communication skills. We also get to sing and dance. Other activities include our Art Club and Stage Crew, who make all the production a reality. In addition to the Drama Club, many of us are also in band, orchestra, and chorus. We can express ourselves through music and learn to work as a team." The kids are saying this, "We appreciate all your support and everything you do for us to support the arts. Sincerely, the cast and crew of the Pine Tree Drama Club." And our Annie play will be going on Friday night at 7:00, and then again, Saturday at 7:00 o'clock at Pine Tree, so come out and enjoy. This is for everybody, the whole community, come on out and enjoy it. Thank you, parents, for bringing it on tonight, we appreciate that. Thank you, everybody.
Does anyone have tissues for Mrs. Rodriguez? And Mrs. Donahue? From Middle School, Mr. Casti will have some students present gifts to the board. We actually had a preview of it this morning. Amazing. Absolutely amazing.
Good evening. The Middle School would like to thank the Board of Education members for their extraordinary dedication to the students and the community. We know each of you devote countless hours supporting and serving our schools. We value your role in establishing a vision for the education of our students. We appreciate how strongly you advocate for ways to improve their learning experience. You always give so generously, and your goals are focused on the success of our students. Tonight, I have students here with me that are going to relay that message even more. I have Joey, Caroline, Jack, Megan, Emily, and Cameron.
In recognition of your commitment and devotion to us, we have created a tribute garden at the middle school. In our tribute garden, we have placed a bench that begins a walkway in your honor. We hope the path in our garden serves to reflect how you all pave the way for all of us to be nourished and grow at the middle school.
Each board member will not only have a lasting place in our hearts, but will always be honored by all who visit our tribute garden. A brick with your name has been placed along the walkway to acknowledge your part in our journey.
We would also like to honor our superintendent, Mrs. Rodriguez, and her cabinet for their part in our experiences here at the middle school. To show our appreciation, we have planted a tree in our tribute garden. The tree stands behind the bench, and was carefully chosen for its many attributes. A tree can start a forest, a tree can offer shade, a tree can offer advice. We hope our tree can symbolize a few lessons we've heard throughout our days here at the middle school. Be like a tree. Stay grounded, stand fully proud, connect with your roots, turn over a new leaf, be flexible, bend before you break, go out on a limb.
And last, but just as important, we would like to thank the special secretaries that help our superintendent and the Board of Education members each day. We know that your help is important to enriching our lives also. We have also planted a tree in our garden to recognize the support of Leah Maher, Board of Education Secretary, and Susan Devlin, Secretary to the Superintendent.
We invited the honorees to visit our garden this morning. They were touched and honored to see a beautiful space dedicated to them. Our Board of Education and central administration always supports us, and our teachers and we were excited to create this garden as a tribute to their service.
Hi, everybody. Wow. It's so cool to be standing up here, speaking to all of you. I have the best part in this presentation, because I am here to introduce a video that shows how our tribute garden began and came together. Our middle school family really worked together a lot to make this garden a special place to honor all of you. So please join me in thanking our principal, Mr. Casti, our assistant principals, Ms. Collins, Mr. Masano, and Mrs. Serrano, our PTA president, Ms. Talber, and Mrs. McNamara, along with many students of the Student Council and NJHS. And without further ado, here's our video. Wait, 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 wait. I don't wanna forget to tell everybody how much our Buildings and Groundscrew Department helped, especially Mr. Blosser. They were awesome. And now, Mr. Masano can begin the video.
The quote at the end of the video is the quote that is on the bench. I offer the board members and the cabinet, anytime you're feeling a little dreary and need a place to relax, please come take a seat on the bench and just relax and have some fun. But before I have the students come up, they have a bag that also has a couple of things in it too, including a certificate that we gave you, a brick that's in our garden. I really have to thank Dawn Talber, our PTA president, and Eileen McNamara for their guidance. Their guidance and support, not only with this project, but for every day, what they do for our kids in our building. So thank you. Come on up, guys. So Mrs. Rodriguez was in our building the other day, and our technology teacher, Mr. Arser Arthur, has outside his room a sign that he made with our 3D printer, so she was wondering if she could have one, so Mr. Arser Arthur worked with some more students to create this sign for Mrs. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Casti, and students from Monroe Woodbury Middle School. Now, Mr. Kravitz and students from Monroe Woodbury High School will make a presentation to the Board of Education.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. First off, I'd like to say, on a personal note, thank you for having this meeting here. It was awesome for me to be able to see so many North Main kids. It's only been a couple months, so it's kinda weird, but it's always nice to come home. And a big thank you to Mr. Cotto and Mr. Peterson and the rest of North Main for hosting this. When you do an event like this in your building, it's not easy, and, Mr. Cotto, you're so tired, aren't you? You must be so tired. But, oh yeah, and you're gonna play basketball tomorrow night, you'll be great, I'm sure. Thursday, or Friday night, you'll be awesome. But thank you for all of that. For me, for years when we were here at North Main, and Mr. Cotto said it best, it was always awesome for us to just give you the kids as our gift, because, well, it was inexpensive and heartfelt. And so what we did, again, is we don't have our students here, there are a lot of students here for government class and photography class and things like that, but what we did is we had our students just create this for you, and you'll, well, you'll get your little, your gift bags as well. But the high school is an amazing place. It's gigantic, and it's alive, and it's fast-paced, and every day is incredibly different than the day before. And the assistant principals in our conference room have a checklist of all the, every time... Good job, Dolores. Dolores. So, it's a big place, it moves quickly, and, but it's great. And the kids, every day, we get to say good morning as soon as they get off the buses, and we're in the hallways, we're all over the place. But what they did for you is they created this short little video. I think one of the best gifts I could give you is something that is brief, because you have a long night ahead, so this is our gift to you.
What do you appreciate about Monroe Woodbury?
We appreciate the music department.
We appreciate Monroe Woodbury.
I appreciate math.
I appreciate the athletic support.
We love the university.
I appreciate the library.
We appreciate the university.
I appreciate the school. Tech department is awesome, the teachers are great. We love the tech department.
We appreciate the English department.
We appreciate the science department.
I appreciate the business classes.
We love the engineering department.
I appreciate the guys smart.
I appreciate the staff of Monroe Woodbury.
I appreciate the health classes.
I appreciate the gym department.
I appreciate the group classes.
We appreciate the health classes.
The teachers are really nice, and students are really good, and we really appreciate them, so.
We would like to take this time to thank the Board of Education for their continued support, not only to our high school, but to our school district, and thank you.
So, on behalf of... So, on behalf of everyone at Monroe Woodbury High School, thank you for all you do for our students, our staff, and our community. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Kravitz, and students from the high school. Representing PTA, we have Kim Lusorsky and the PTA presidents, who would like to honor the members of the board.
Good evening. As our PTA council president, Dawn, is getting ready to distribute our gift to you, if there are any PTA board members, come forward, please, and help her. If not, I'll help you in a second, Dawn. Okay? We want to thank, and this gift is from all seven PTA buildings in Scepter. We want to thank you for your time, your dedication, and for making the difference in the lives of our students, our parents, and the district at large. We also wanna make sure we thank Susan, and Leah, and Carol, and Prudence, for they keep us together and they keep the communications going. The PT applauds all your efforts, and we are grateful for all your continued support. These blankets symbolize the warmth and security you show to all of us. Thank you very much.
This is Eric's, but that's okay. Thank you, PTA. Last but not least, in the presentations, representing the music boosters, Diane Levisier.
Good evening, Mr. Hubert, members of the board, Mrs. Rodriguez, and members of the council. On behalf of the music students, I would first like to introduce the 2016-17 Executive Board. We have our vice president, who we're many of tonight, Dawn, and some of you might recognize our secretary, Mrs. Isrodi, there, Cheryl, our treasurer's Amy Lederman, and myself, Diane Levisier, and president. We're very happy to be here tonight to support, or to appreciate the Board of Education, I'm sorry, because without your support and the support of the entire district, the music department would not be successful as it is. So, formally, we're here to say we appreciate you. Some upcoming events we have, we have our fall-winter concert season starting November 30th, and that wraps up on January 20th. And this is the music season when we pray for little-to-no snow-related events. January 19th through the 23rd, we have the 2017 Inauguration Heritage Festival, which will be held in Washington, DC. And members of the high school wind ensemble, voice ensemble, and chamber orchestra will be participating. This is an amazing event for our music students. We wish them luck with their performances, and even more luck maneuvering around DC in a huge bus during Presidential Inauguration Week. I was thinking of just handing you a flyer with all our concert dates on it, but that's just like saying, "Here, take this, throw it out." So, instead, as William Shakespeare said, "If music be the food of love, play on." He probably said it with a British accent, but not a partly Bronx one, but that's okay. So, with music and food in mind, we would like to present you with a milk-chocolate, music-embossed, homemade lollipop. We have some of our amazing students, and coincidentally, some of them have the same last names as the executive board, and they are here to present them to you. We have Josh Levisier, Kayla Tauber, Ryan Isrodi, and Ethan Lederman. And again, thank you for your continued support. Before we take a little break, I want to, I want to thank everybody for the thanks, the recognition. My wife, on occasions like this, will advise me to say, "Just say 'thank you,' and then sit down and shut up." But who listens? The gifts to us, the gifts to needy children, the gifts of song, the gifts that will raise my blood sugar a little. We all thank you. And on behalf of the board, and on behalf of the board, I want to tell you the little secret that we hold in our hearts. And that is, though we are greatly appreciative of the gifts that we get tonight and the recognition that you show us, what keeps us, and what keeps us going in this job, is the fact that we are dedicated to doing this. We like to do it. We feel in our hearts that it is not a thankless job. We feel thanks all the time, because we have the opportunity to help you, the opportunity to help oversee this school district, and to help educate as best as the teachers and staff can, your children. That's the thanks that we have every day, and it's a thanks that you don't have to give us. We have in our hearts, and at the same time, what I want to say is, for tonight, thank you, and now shut up. So, we'll take a short recess and resume the board meeting in a few minutes. Thank you very much. Hold on, hold on, I'm looking for a piece of paper. This is annoying me, hold on. I'd like to, do you recall a meeting? No. To order? You call a meeting, you reconvene? That's correct. Some meetings we'd like to recall, but not this evening's. We are reconvening. No board business was done during the brief recess. We have comments and questions from interested citizens. Gloria Galata? Right up here, oh, can we turn that, or whatever? Thank you. Whatever. You emailed me, correct? Yes, I did. Okay. Keep it short. I'm requesting that the school board consider adopting a local option law for partial property tax exemption for senior citizens, as allowed by the Real Property Tax Law, Section 467. And as a senior citizen who's on a fixed income in order to try to maintain my ownership in the county, I think this partial exemption is important for not only me, but for other people. And I just ask you for your consideration to please look at it, and thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you. Elsie, you're not prepared to speak. She's eating our presents. I apologize. That's fine, it's my favorite. We will, I'm sorry. That's all right. It was good. We'll have a discussion with Mr. Cahill. Did you want to say something, Mr. Cahill?
I believe the district already grants the senior exemption, and I think specifically what you're talking about is a provision whereby certain expenses can be deducted from the income. The exemption is based on income, so there's a range, and there's a sliding scale associated with the income. So, if your income is below a certain limit, you get a 50% exemption on your property, and if it's a little bit more, it's 45% exemption, and so on, and it goes to 5%. And there's a provision in the law, which I think was recently enacted, whereby these certain medical expenses and prescription drug costs can be deducted from the owner's income, which would be beneficial, so that your exemption would either be higher, or where you were previously ineligible, you could be eligible. I believe that's the provision that you speak of, and I've looked into it a little bit, I've read up on it. I don't really know what the impact for our district would be, but it's something we certainly can look into and gauge the effect on us.
Are you saying, though, that the general provision, the law itself, is enacted in our district?
Yes.
And therefore, it would be carried out through each municipality?
Correct. We would each, well, we as a district would approve this provision, and then each of the five municipalities would then sort of turn it on and grant the exemption through the local assessor's office.
Right.
And administer it that way as well.
All right. So, we'll look into it further and look, and I just want to make sure that we're clear on this. Were you under the assumption that there was no... I was under the assumption that there was no partial tax exemption. You had to enact the law. Each district, each school district or town could do it, so you had to do...
We have enacted the law. Are you in the town, which town do you live in, ma'am?
I'm in Blooming Grove.
Blooming Grove, okay. And did you speak to the local assessor about this matter?
Yes.
Okay.
And I was told it wasn't, that it was not... Could we, could we, we have your phone number, I believe. I think it's on here, right? We have your phone number. Why don't we look into that, and then Mr. Cahill will give you personally, we'll call you back.
I will contact you and then we'll clear it up.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. You're welcome. But over and above, I mean, if there's a misunderstanding out there, either on your part or on our part, or on the parts of local tax assessors, we should, we should figure out where the misinformation or misunderstanding lies, and get information out on our website that clears this up for everybody, including you. Right? Because I could not find anything on the website. I've been told by the assessor there is none for the Monroe Woodbury School District, and it has to be enacted district-wide, not just one little town. And we're saying we've enacted it. So, let's, we'll get to the bottom of it.
Yeah.
But thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you very much. He's not going to speak, but... No, I know. Do you want to talk about that? I do, I want to follow up. Last month, we had Mr. Powell, he spoke about the buses that go to the Woodbury Commons and park at the middle school. So, we did some following up on our end, and what we learned is that we do not have a contract with Woodbury Commons, and a phone call was made to them, and they were told that they are not allowed to park there. Mr. Powell has also raised an issue about our tennis courts and the lights being on all night long, so I have assured him that we will look into that, and I will, I will personally give him a call, because I agree with him. He's concerned that the lights are on all night long, and we don't want that happening. It's an expenditure for the taxpayers and the community, and so, again, we will look into that, Mr. Powell, and I will give you a call myself. Thank you. Thank you. And it's not a, you know, sometimes you go, "Oh, gosh, this is what a pain in the neck." But, but people such as yourselves in various neighborhoods with concerns should feel absolutely free to come and bring them to our attention. So, I thank you for doing that. Hmm?
Or call you directly.
No, not call me directly, Dawn. Mr. Powell has my email, so I, and my phone number, so I said, "Please give me a call," but I will reach out to you. I'll find out, we know why that's happening, and if there's something that we should do, but we will reach, we will call you back. I will call you back. Thank you. Are there any other, or is that it? No, that was it. That's it? A motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education's regular meeting on October 26th, and the minutes of the working session of November 9th. We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments or questions about this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Second reading of the policy manual update. Who does that? I like that. Well, we, what we did this past month, which was a little different, is that we normally read it, and then we waived the second reading. So, we read the policies that we were looking to have approved by the board, and then allowed the community, if they had any questions, to please contact us. We actually met again today, and we did not receive any questions or comments from the community, so at this point, what we're looking for is approval from the Board of Education. So do I have a motion to approve the second reading of the policy manual updates. 7131, Education of Homeless Children and Unaccompanied Youth. 7132, Admission of Non-Resident Status Students, excuse me. Policy 7213, Academic Intervention Services. Policy 7316, Use of Timeout Rooms, Physical Restraints and Adversives.
Motion. Second.
Any comments? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports by the Board of Education. Do we have a policy report?
As Elsie said, we met this morning. I'm happy to say we are one policy away from Phase 1 being over. It only took us a year. We're going to start Phase 2 starting December 14th. We're going to have another meeting. We're actually going to meet with NISBA. They're going to give us some background on a bunch of things that we need to discuss. The last one that we're in review right now is Section 501, the Due Process Hearing Procedure for our 504 students. We're going to, we're just comparing it with our attorneys and NISBAs and the surrounding districts. We're just going to add a few things. We might add a, we're adding several hearing offices, maybe might be the only real big change, where you have a choice of who's going to hear the hearing or the process going forward. Other than that, we'll meet on the 14th, and that, we'll probably get whatever that in, in that night's meeting, and we'll move forward for the new year. That's it.
Thank you, Chris. Dawn, do we have a, do we have a facilities meeting?
Yes, we had a facilities meeting. I think the most important thing about our facilities is the process is going extremely well. We have a very comprehensive process that we're following. As a matter of fact, we already have had some issues that were missed in the first phase, but were caught in the second phase of the process. So, I'm very, very pleased with the way the whole thing is going, because it's extremely comprehensive. It's going to be quite an undertaking. I know Patrick might have some details on the stuff, but overall, I know Elsie and Eric are meeting with the architects this month, but the process is churning away, and we're actually catching things that slipped through, so it's, I'm very, very pleased with that.
Anything to add? We're fine.
The only thing I would add is we met with the architects last Friday and toured the Sapphire Dorm as part of the feasibility study that they were doing, and the takeaway, basically, by Michael McGovern, sort of the, one of the lead architects, was there were no deal-breakers in that building, renovating that building. You know, it's sound structurally and otherwise. Will need some work, obviously, and that was part of the walkthrough, to sort of collect more information about certain mechanical elements of the building. But, you know, we're moving along with the facilities plan, as Dawn said, and next phase is meetings with district instructional leaders and administrators, so.
Thank you. Elsie, do you want to mention, we had a meeting for the Boundary Alteration Committee? We did. I do want to speak a little bit about this committee. We created this committee last year in October of 2015, and the purpose of this committee, first of all, it's a temporary committee, to look at the boundary lines between the Monroe Woodbury Central School District and the Curious-Joelle Union Free School District. And the purpose of the committee is really to gather information and look at the data and compare what the Curious-Joelle School District has provided us with an independent group that we have hired, Questar III, to look at certain information that would help us to determine whether that's in the best interest of the school district. So, we had our first meeting last year in November of 2015. We had our second meeting on Monday of this week, and we attended the meeting simply to hear from the Curious-Joelle Central School, Union Free School District. And I just want to talk a little bit about some of the things that they presented. They presented information on special education, transportation, they talked about the impacted parcels, and the loss of property tax revenue. In attendance was the Director for Real Property Tax Service for Orange County. We were there simply to listen. They gave us information, and the next steps for the school district is to really have our report completed by Questar III. I did share with Mr. Petland, who is the superintendent of the KJ School District, that the process for us is a little bit different, because we have Questar III that's doing, that they will be doing a report. That report will be given to the Board of Education, and then that report will also be shared with the community. We feel that it's very important for us to talk about the impact that this would have if, in fact, we went in that direction. But there's, for us, it's a little bit of a longer process. We will complete the report, share the report with the Board of Education, and share the report with the community. And then after that process, we will sit down together as a board and discuss if that is in the best interest of the district. We have not reached that decision, so I just want to be clear that we are in the process, which means that we are still gathering a lot of information, and this is quite a challenge for us, because it's... And this is quite a challenge for us because it's, it's, it's a very detailed information and it has taken a long time and people have wondered why has it taken a long time? But because it's very detailed information. We're, we're talking about 164 acres and we're talking about students and there's a lot, there's a part for us to talk about what happens if that is high density housing and the impact that would have for the school district. So again, we went to this meeting and we listened. They were very gracious in providing us with information and now our, our responsibility is to do our due diligence and wait for Questar Three to give us their report and then share with the community.
Thank you.
Elsie, on that note, the, from the community, from what we've heard, none of the meetings that have been had should be construed as anything other than, we're not for or against. We're just, we're in the process of listening.
We are. There were several of us who attended. I attended along with two of our attorneys, Mr. Cahill, Dr. Hasler. We there, we were all there. And again, it was their presentation to the school district and we really were there just to listen to what they had to share with us. And again, they were very gracious and they provided us with, with some information that they had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, do you want to report on the New York State School Boards Association Conference that you attended?
Yes. Elsie, Eric, Harry and myself went to Buffalo a few weeks ago. And part of going there is each year, the New York State School Board Association votes on bylaws and resolutions. For the most part, the School Board Association, when they vote on something, for the most part, they're voting to go to the legislation and ask them for, you know, they want to campaign for a specific thing. So most of the things that are voted on in these meetings are, yes, let's go talk to the legislation and try to push this agenda forward. With that, we started out, there were five proposed bylaw amendments and 24 proposed resolutions. Two of the bylaws passed, two of the resolutions were extended and 14 were adopted. There's really not, there weren't any major changes, but the one that I, I will point out is resolution 10, the School Board Association voted to go to the legislation and ask for an increase in the BOSI superintendent rate. What's happened over the years, there's a law that says the superintendent can be, the BOSI superintendent can be paid this amount. I don't know how many years ago this law was put in place, but it was many, many years ago. That amount is fixed, it hasn't been changed. So what happens is BOSIs, all the BOSIs in New York State have troubles recruiting a superintendent because the superintendent of BOSIs typically makes less than any other superintendent. So you're not going to get the applicants that are needed to actually run it. So that was, I think, probably one of the ones that for us would, would make a fairly big, the other stuff were, it was administrative and not really much to report on there.
Thank you. And you to present it?
We did.
You want to mention that? Do you want to pat yourself on the back or about that?
Well, actually, I really do want to thank Dr. Hasler and I rarely do that, so this is, this is a, this is a really special moment. I don't, I don't do that often.
Wait, let me get comfortable.
Yes. We presented and, and he did all of the work. He put together a presentation on the school climate and where we've come, where we started and where we've come as a school district. And I do have to compliment, he did a very, very nice job. That's it, I'm not saying anything else.
I think we're a good, I think.
We are a very good team. We're, we're very passionate about what we've done in Monroe Woodbury and we're very excited about where we're going. I think what, what came across is that we love this district and I think that the culture that we are creating is one that our students are really going to be successful and learn from.
And Harry was our presider.
And Harry was our presider.
As a representative of the school district.
He did. So we were actually a really good team, all three of us.
This is a conference that not only has an annual meeting to vote on resolutions, the resolutions, as Don said, are mainly, the New York State School Boards Association is sort of the lobbying group to a great extent for the initiatives that collectively the New York State School Boards want to put forward and present to the legislature. Also, in those two or three days, are, are various conferences with, and presentations, a whole bunch of educational presentations in various time slots. There are probably half a dozen to a dozen presentations going on at one time, all through these, all through these two days, two and a half days. It's, it's quite something and it's an annual, an annual event, an important one, so.
I did want to mention one more thing, that while we were presenting, we had some, a representative from the State Education Department who sat in to hear our presentation and they were very complimentary about what we've done in Monroe Woodbury. So it was very nice to be acknowledged by the State Education Department.
And it's good to share these things. Best practices are not best practices if they're kept under a bushel. We need to share, teachers need to share best practices in their classrooms within a school district. We need to share best practices of what we do in Monroe Woodbury with other districts and vice versa. You know, a rising tide lifts all boats, that sort of thing. And now we'll have our first, and I don't know if it's going to be every time, but it could be, report by the student representative of the Board of Education, Dan Willis, who has been out and about and has a report for us.
So I'd like to thank the Board of Education, who, as I said, you cabinet for allowance to present to you the student body report, the first edition. I just have to go ahead and do, I just think, give a short update or a synopsis on how the filters are doing from a student body perspective, student background, if I had a chance to do it all with the principals, I would be telephone calls to actually in person. And I would say it was a pretty fun time, we didn't even go to principals. And I had the opportunity to talk to them, get a little, get a little, know about them and how they operate their school and why they do what they do, to give a, just a little brief synopsis on what results I found. So what, that was the what. How is, every single month, I'm going to be visiting each school within our district and visiting the building principals again, just to get a look at how the students doing, shadow some teachers, look at how the classrooms are going and also see how the students, just see the smiles on the students' faces, I think that's the main reason all of us are in the position we are in. When, it'll be before every single board meeting, between the time, between this board meeting and the next board meeting, I'd like to do it. And why is just to show everyone here, from all the way down from just me and a student representative, other to the superintendent, the board president, just to see what the students of Monroe Woodbury are doing, to give you guys just another representation of our student body and the greatness that our students can achieve with the tools that we provide them. So the first one was Sapphire. Below each one is the, as I asked the principals, the question, what is your motivation to come to work every day and why do you do what you do? Ms. Brock, I knew she was here. Yeah, she said that, Ms. Brock. I'd give Ms. Brock around the board. Her motto was so that the students feel loved and supported.
Oh, thank you. And just everything that Ms. Brock does, everything that, how she interacts with the staff members, how she interacts with the students is just a, just the result and just the example that she sets within the district, within her school. I had a chance to meet with a couple of Sapphire students and they couldn't stop talking about Ms. Brock in this opportunities they had. Also, their auditorium looks stupendous. It is awesome. And just in general, the staff members, when I had a chance to meet with a couple of them, introduce myself, they all spoke volumes and couldn't stop talking about the school and how proud of, how proud they were to be working in that school. One of the cool things that Ms. Brock instituted was a, a bag filled with glitter and glue, am I correct in saying that? It is, it was instituted by one of the student teachers and it helps students, like, helps students write their letters. So after you write the letter in glitter, you just wave your hand over it and it's a brand new fresh slate. So that was one of the coolest opportunities that I got to see while on Sapphire and doing the walk around. This is a beautiful school. So the next is Smith Clove, Mr. Berger, he's around here, there he goes. Just an awesome guy, my alma mater. And his, and his, his whole entire aspect, what I got from him, I actually got a chance to talk with him over the phone today, was making sure the students love school. This is the first experience students get within our district and we want to make sure that it is a good one because they have eight, a couple more years of it. And so everything that he does, all the programs that he institutes, is to make sure that the students feel loved and they're representative within, within the school. From going to the, different libraries, to making sure that every single water testing such as in Sapphire, if the water has not been tested, water has test positive for whether they're taking all the proactive measures to make sure the students are being, are in the safest position they can be and that every student in the school wants to come to school. And that if they don't, that he's going to make sure, he's going to try his hardest out of all of his 18 years as a seasoned veteran of this school to make sure that these students want to come to school. The next is Central Valley. Ms. Turecki, probably one of the best conversations I had. I just, I just love her. I don't know, I just love her. It was just a great conversation.
And that's Ms. Turecki you're talking about?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, okay.
Her motivation is making sure that students feel safe, loved and valued. And that's, I just can't agree more with. And everything that she does from the, from, I got a chance to sit down with Ms. Matola's fourth grade class, I'm a student teacher in there, student helper, and everything that they do, that Ms. Turecki and Mr. Barone both do within their building to make sure, Mr. Barone actually dressed up in a ballerina costume and that, that doesn't spell commitment, I do not know what does.
Thank you for sharing that.
And, yes, on video. And just the whole essence of the atmosphere, which I got from Central Valley Elementary, from getting the opportunity to see these, these young students growing up academically, socially and physically, just to see how they grow and what their, the young, mature students that they're going to be turning into one day is just the epitome of what it means to be in the education, education business. So the students there, they have plays coming up. The one cool thing that I like to share with the board is the New York Wind Symphony is actually coming down. They selected Central Valley Elementary to, to align themselves with and have a concert alongside the fourth graders with the wind, with the wind symphony. So this could be pretty cool, this concert's coming up and it's basically going to be a professional next to a fourth grader, giving them tips and tricks on how to be a professional. Next one is Pine Tree. Pine Tree, where is, there goes Ms. Judes. He's just, he's just a lovable guy. You can't, you gotta love him. His motivation was students are prepared not only academically, but socially and physically. I had a wonderful talk with him and talking about all the different programs he instituted. The one big thing that I like to highlight is that all his work within the Special Education Department and everything that he has done personally and worked alongside with his staff and also the students to make sure that that program is representative of all the flagship programs that are started, that he makes sure that they're done to the best ability. Also, another thing I'd like to mention that Pine Tree does, they have the Patriot Club, am I correct in, the Patriot Club. That is for students whose parents are on active duty, military service members, and it basically provides an outlet for these new military families moving into the district to have the opportunity to say, hey, there's more people like us here to get to know, hey, who's the best eye doctor around here? How's the school board? Who's the best doctor to go to? Where's the best place to get Chinese food? All those places, I think that's a wonderful opportunity, another avenue for students and parents to explore, getting the first sense of our district and our area that they just moved into. North Main, Mr. Coda. Where'd he go? I know he's running around somewhere.
No, he's there, he's sitting down.
He's right back there, yeah, there he goes.
He's taking a nap.
He didn't go home yet, he didn't go home yet. So he said, so I can come in every day and make the students and staff smile. We are currently in North Main right now in the gymnasium and I had the opportunity to walk around when I'm doing Boy Scouts prior to this meeting and, not an official walk through with him, but I plan to do so soon. And just the enthusiasm that he puts out, just seeing him run around tonight, making sure everything is worked perfectly, is just the dedication and enthusiasm that any good parent, community member or student will want to see within their building administration. And I know him and his building administration work tirelessly to make sure that every single faculty and staff member come in every single day to work at school and have the best time possible within their educational career. Middle School, where is Mr. Casti? There he goes. So Mr. Casti, that was, it was a great conversation I had with him. He said the same thing, make sure students are prepared for all areas of life, academically, socially and physically. Middle School is a big, is the big middle, is the big middle bridge between high school and the elementary schools. And just walking around, getting the opportunity to talk with students, getting the opportunity to interact with staff members, also my alma mater. It was just amazing time, it was just rejuvenating and just seeing tonight of all the students coming, representing in their respective schools is just the reason why we do it. And just having the students come up to me and say, oh, this is awesome, I can't believe you're doing this position, here are some of my ideas. And these sixth and seventh and eighth graders, don't, don't fear to come up to me, and I just really love that. And also with the student, student leadership government that they have, with the lead conference coming up soon down to Washington DC, alongside with the elementary schools, I forgot to mention, Mr. Barone and Mr. Judes is in the elementary schools, they have fifth grade advisory, which basically the fifth graders have the opportunity to get into a leadership position and do everything. They, Mr. Judes pointed out the playground that the fifth graders wanted and said, listen, this playground, we need a new one. And we threw a year, threw, threw help with the PTA, they got the playground. And I'm just going to say, it took every single restraint in my body not to go run and play on it when we were having a walk through. So that's all this leadership that these students, that these building principals are putting these students into is just something that just speaks volumes of the quality of students and administration we have within our district. And now the high school. Where is Mr. Kravitz? There he goes, back there. He said, so each student and staff member will get a high five each day and leave with a smile. High school is, I believe, probably the most important, basically, it's right before post-secondary education for all students and making sure the teachers and staff are prepared to educate these young adults, as myself, to make sure that our college experience in transition is going to be one of smoothness and that preparedness. And just as a high school student, walking around the building, seeing the atmosphere, seeing the teachers, feedback to when I'm asking questions, the students are loving the building, are loving the administration, loving the clubs, loving the athletics, such as we had a couple of section championships from athletics, a couple of clubs do awesome things. And just seeing that is just the validation that proves to us and proves to myself that this whole, this whole, this, what we're doing right now is all worth it, is all worth it because it's affecting students like me and just seeing the changes that all of us put into it is, and work is just seeing that what we do pays off. And so what's next? One project that I'm working on is, is to give students the prompt, one thing people don't know about me is, and the students finish it. I tried it out with Ms. Turecki's fourth grade, Ms. Matola's class first and the results were astounding. I also tried it out with Mr. Capriello's sixth grade class and the results just left me speechless. I then tried it out with Ms. Wright, the health department chair for the high school, her 10th grade class, and they were eye-opening. So what I'm, what I'm doing, I'm going to try to go to every single building if I can and just get a student's perspective. And when you see the results as a board, the next meeting, I will give them all to you in a packet, you will realize that there's stories that go with some of these students and realize that every decision that we make is in the best interest of every type of student we have that represents our great district. Any questions?
I'm sorry, we can't have you be more enthusiastic.
I want to say thank you very much for listening and taking your time and thank you for giving me the opportunity to present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Presentation on the energy program with Jill Parasella and Ken Daubert.
With a suit.
With, yes. Looking very spiffy, Ken.
Okay. Sonia? Great, thank you. Okay. Well, thanks for having us. I just want to take a second, introduce myself because I'm new to the district. Everybody knows Ken, he's been here forever. But I hail from the other side of the river in Poughkeepsie and I've been doing this job in other districts for about eight years. So I joined this district because I saw an opportunity for a lot of growth and a good program and you guys gave me an awesome partner, Ken. So I actually also do this job in Hyde Park School District. So this is a much bigger district and this is a really nice district. Everybody here is really nice, so I'm really happy to be here. So we are, well. And uh, you guys gave me an awesome partner, Ken. So, um, um, I actually also do this job in Hyde Park School District. So, um, this is a much bigger district and this is a really nice district. Everybody here is really nice. So I'm really happy to be here. So we are, well, we're presenting on the energy program that we have in the district. And this is kind of a, a relaunch of the energy program. It's, it started out back in 2013, um, when the Board of Education, as it was then, signed a contract with Synergistic, um, to provide uh, training and expertise, um, on a behavioral-based energy program. And um, the first energy specialist that the district had was hired in the fall of 2014. Um, and he was here for about a year, um, before he ended up retiring. And then that fall, I guess, began the search for a new energy specialist. And um, Ken and I came on board this past spring in March. Um, and we've done a lot of good since then. Yeah. The first thing I wanna be really clear about is that the energy program's first and most important goal is not to save money. The first and most important goal is to improve the comfort, um, and the conditions in our schools and our classrooms. We don't wanna impact instruction time except for the better. Um, we want everything to work the way it's supposed to work. We want the buildings to function as they're designed. And this helps to eliminate complaints and comfort issues. Um, after that, we're looking to save energy where we can and eliminate waste and save money and keep that, that money in the district for our schools and our kids. Um, in doing so, we also wanna create a culture of awareness throughout the district. It's, carries up from the kids in the elementary schools to the middle school, to the high school, back out into the community. We hope the kids take this home with them and good habits are developed, um, everywhere. What we've done since we've gotten here is, um, we've re-implemented the program. We do building audits, about 20 to 30 building audits per week. Um, these audits are done during all different time periods. There's five different time periods. Early, early in the morning, late at night, during the occupied school day, um, weekends, holidays, middle of the night, um, evening after everybody's left. So we're in and out of those buildings constantly during all different times. And what we do when we go to audit a building is we come into a building and we're looking for opportunities to save energy where we may not have seen it yet. We're looking for equipment that may be malfunctioning or schedules that aren't right. Um, and we're looking to communicate with the custodial staff and the teachers. We wanna know what's going on in the buildings and, you know, how you're feeling and, um, we just wanna make things better. And we want to make sure that the guidelines the board has adopted are being implemented properly in all the buildings. We've also tried to um, educate everybody in the buildings. Um, Ken's really great at that. Um, he stops and talks to everybody in every building we go to. Um, making sure that everybody knows that we're all in the buildings, we all use energy, we're all energy users. Therefore, we all have to be responsible energy consumers.
We've already attended the faculty meetings in the elementary buildings.
Right, yep. Um, part of coming on board was a data analysis. Um, I needed to analyze the database that had been created. And I actually had to go back and um, re- redo a lot of the data and, and check all of the data to make sure that there were no anomalies, there were no, um, nothing was missed. Um, so we did kind of like an audit of the entire database once we came on board. In our audits and in our buildings, we, we use a lot of different tools to um, help us determine what's going on and where we can save extra energy. Um, one of the things we've been doing is putting data loggers in the buildings. It, they look like in that picture, a little white box. And they, they're Bluetooth, so we can put them in a room. We can measure the temperature and the humidity in that room for any amount of time that we want. And then we can download that data onto our phone and create a graph and, or an Excel spreadsheet that'll tell us what's going on in that space so that we know if what the computer's telling us is going on is actually what's going on in that space.
There's green and red.
Right, so the red line is the temperature. Now, I wanted to show you this picture because it's a really good visual representation of what we're trying to do. This classroom is operating as it should. And you can see that the red line, it goes up. That's when the classroom comes on for the occupied school day. And it goes up to temperature and it stays up and then it coasts down. See how it coasts all the way down to this, right, the low 60s? And then it goes back up again when the building comes on in the morning. Now that valley there, between those two peaks, that, that V, all that space there is where we're saving energy. We're not just leaving the classroom on 24/7. That, so each valley there are, those big spaces is where we save a lot of our energy in all the buildings.
The green is the relative humidity.
Right, and you can see that the humidity usually is, um, in, right, inversely proportional to the, the temperature. And that's what we wanna see.
For a healthy building.
So it's just kind of a visual of kind of where we get our savings, some of our savings.
And your, your systems measure the outdoor temperature and adjust accordingly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, this screen is a, um, a snapshot from our database of a savings explanation. And I just, it's, it's another good visual to show you how we calculate our savings in a very basic way without going into formulas and stuff. The, the column B there is what our actual baseline is. The baseline is the entire year of data before you ever had an energy program. So it's kind of what the building was doing before any kind of program impacted it. That baseline data is taken and it's adjusted for what's going on right now in the time period. So it's adjusted for the current weather conditions, it's adjusted for the current cost of that commodity. Um, it's adjusted for any mechanical changes that were made in the building. And that's what your column A is. That's what your adjusted baseline is. That's what you're expected to use in the time period. Column C is what we actually use in the time period, taken right off the bills, right off the meters. So the difference between the column A and the column C is D, and that's where you get your savings.
This is just a snapshot of the bus garage in a month.
Right, this is the natural gas from the bus garage.
We can do this with any building and show you at any time what the savings was.
So is it factor in, obviously, natural gases tanked, right? So is it, is it more related to the cost of our energy? Or um, the methodology that we're using to save energy, right? So if, if natural gas comes off 30% and we're saving 20%?
There's less savings. The good news is we paid less. There is less savings. But you still get a percentage of the energy that was conserved.
Right, this is, we're not taking credit for the cost of energy reduction. It's, that's adjusted for.
That's the adjusted part. That's in the software.
What, what we're doing is saying, okay, we were supposed to use, based on how the building operated prior to a program and based on the adjustment for the cost and the weather. This is what, column A is saying, this is what you should have spent.
Maybe an entropy?
Right.
Using entropy algorithms for most of it or?
Yeah, there's entire linear regressions that are built into the software. And um, and it lets you know if you exceed any of those outer bounds so that you can look and see what's going on.
Energy cap is the nationwide standard and that's what we use.
The question we'd asked the last time we saw this was, we have two buildings that are close to unoccupied. And we didn't know if the data for the overall included those or excluded them. Or, um, I think at one point we were, we were, we asked if we could see like the, the graph with and without those buildings because we weren't sure if, if, if the number was off because.
Understood, understood. And it was a good question.
And I'm.
The gas went.
Well, they're saying that the.
And plus the gas was low at that time, so we didn't really have an accurate.
Right.
But I think what you're referring to is like the dormitory, Sapphire Dorm. That has completely been eliminated from the program as a cost savings or thing.
And Harriman?
Harriman Center is still there because it's occupied every day and we're utilizing it for student space as well as staff space. So unfortunately, even though it's not overutilized with people, you still have to heat and light the same building. So that one's still there and the occupied space is still a regular day there.
Right, and we are implementing the program in the Harriman Center, in the dormitory because it was shut down and not being used. I mean, you still have a base load there because you have pumps that have to run and stuff. But we're not running the building as an occupied building. So in the program, we, we entered in a no loss, no gain for the building. So it doesn't impact the program's reported savings.
Jill reordered the entire program when she came in, based on her eight years' experience. So that's how we knew we had a better stand.
So with the Sapphire Dorm, we haven't let out the pipes, which is keeping a.
There's no heat, but there's electric there for pumps. And um, there's still, it's still, it's still there. We haven't shut it down completely, but the pipes haven't.
You have, when you have, when you close down a building, you have to have, i- if you're maintaining the building at all, you have to have some sort of base load there. You have like emergency lights that'll come on there. You have, right, some pumps that work, so. Yeah, yeah, no, we're not running heat there, nothing like that, right.
No, I, I don't think there's any heat.
Well, you have to have heat or the pipes will freeze.
Are we gonna be fixing the pipes?
Right, it's.
You have to have some heat.
Yeah.
Because we have what, one tenant in there?
No.
No, we have no one. We have no one in there.
No one's in there.
We have no one there.
Medical, they left.
They have been let. He said he didn't know. But just, just to clarify, I, I believe and I would confirm with Bill that the pipes have been let out. The, the, um, the boilers are inactive right now and there's no water either in the building. So there's no danger of pipes freezing, you know, because of the lack of heat.
Correct.
Bill is here. I see Bill over there. I see you trying to hide Bill. Can't hide from me.
Um, can, can you just answer that so that everybody feels?
Was that accurate, Bill, what I just said?
Yes, uh, so what we did in um, October 2015 is we drained the boilers, we drained all the heat pipes, we drained all the water, hot and cold water lines in the building. So that when the building comes back alive, hopefully someday then, the pipes will be in good condition to re-utilize the building.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue.
Okay. So some of those, some of the changes that impact how we use energy are, like I mentioned, the weather. Um, last year, we had a winter that was exceptionally warm. It was about 40% warmer than the previous year. That impacts energy in that we are not using as much energy because we don't need to use as much heat. Um, and if you're using less energy, you have less opportunity to save energy as well. So that does impact what we save and what we use. The cost of our commodities is always taken into account. Um, right now, costs have remained fairly low and stable. Um, we'll see if that changes now. Um, equipment, mechanical changes, we take into consideration. There were new unit ventilators put into Pine Tree several, several years ago and we made adjustments for that. Um, the district does have pneumatics still in their buildings, which are airlines that control what turns things on and off. Because you have airlines that are some 50, 60 years old in the buildings. What happens is those get all dried out and cracked. You have air leaks. When you have air leaks, things don't work properly. They tend to overheat. They tend to not turn on, things like that.
Most of those you can replace with solenoid though, right? You can just switch out the solenoid?
Well, some of the problem though is that these airlines, a lot of times they're run under slab or they're behind block.
Eliminate the air.
You can. We can go, we can go to, yes. Direct, yes. Direct digital controls. We can do that. Um, and like we talked about, the opening and closing of buildings, so. Um, this is a, a look from this, the past year. And this isn't really a representative distribution of how our energy is normally split up because it was so much warmer last year. That natural gas, you would normally see a lot more of that. Um, but the, the electricity is about, yeah, that's about right. Um, and we don't have a lot of oil in this district, so that's good.
Is there a temperature adjusted factor in it?
For?
For the use of the, for the cost of the energy? Usually they're like a temperature adjust where you say, this period of time was so many degrees warmer or colder.
Yeah, they, all the degree days are taken into account, yep.
Okay, so that's averaged into this already?
Yes, and this is, this is just, this isn't a savings, this is just actually what was spent on our utilities last year. That's all that is, just raw, what we spent. Now, this does not include water and sewer meters. Those were never put into the database when the program was started. So I have yet to put those in. Um, we are going to include those. I don't know why they weren't included to begin with, but we will be including those. Um, okay, so where the program is at as far as savings? This is, the first number is the entire life of the program up until this past August. So you're talking about three years. It's only at about 8.7%. Um, the reason for that, there's a lot of factors. Um, there was, you know, 17 months before the first energy manager was hired and then there was some, um, a, another break before we were hired. And if you don't have somebody here minding the store, you're going to have losses. Um, since Ken and I came on board, the, the five months or so that we were here, that time period, we were able to bring up that percentage, um, several points in just a few months. Um, so we're expect, and you know, because it's the whole life of the program, it's averaged. But we're, we're expecting to bring that number up even further. Um, this slide is just a, a snapshot of the 10-year projected savings from Synergistic. Um, there, the, the data that they used, um, uses the former trajectory of the program savings. So we're, it's very conservative and we're expecting that to change a great deal now that we're here. Um, in year five, you're gonna see your net, your net savings is going to increase in year five because your payments to Synergistic will drop off in that year. So right there, you'll have a six-figure net increase, um, starting in year five. Um, and then, you know, there was Synergistic and the district had, you know, they have a contract, has addendums. It was all figured in. But I think this is a very conservative chart and I think we're gonna do a lot better than that, so.
So if I'm reading it right, it's $500,000 savings projected for 10 million, uh, for 10 years, excuse me?
For 10 years.
No, the savings for 10, those are in thousands?
These are, yeah.
So the actual cumulative savings in 10 years will be $2,500,000.
But wouldn't you look, take the expense from the savings, which would leave you?
Correct.
500,000?
In which year? Because each year will be different. That's, I wanted to show you a chart where we were each year. You're going to save more and more, especially when we stop paying the contract for Synergistic, but, um.
Right, so year 10, you're at $2,500,000 in savings.
And you're right, and we spent $2,000,000. So there's 500,000 savings in that year.
Right, so if you look at the numbers that you did in three years, you're, you were way ahead of even their projections there. And I mean, if you take 500,000 a year divided by 10, that's 50,000. You're way ahead already, just in, in three months, you're at 86,000.
We're, we're doing good since we started. But it's amazing how, when we first started this program and we were spending a lot more in energy than we are now. Um, and there was a lot more to be saved. Now, thank God, we're spending less for our energy. So we're still saving that percentage. We're at 15% energy conservation for our district. Most places average about 30% waste in their energy use. So we know we can bring that number up through our goals. And the key here, like Jill started out, was we're looking for energy savings for the future generations. The money comes after the energy savings and that's calculated in the software program. It's a very conservative chart. We will bring you up to date a couple of times a year, just what we actually save.
In your opinion, and you've got Synergistic's, you know, this thing, from a board's perspective, going forward, you get the sense that we'd probably be better off with our own management system to, to do something like this?
It, it's, it's sort of like we signed a contract.
No, no, that part I understand.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the contract.
What do you mean, what do you mean by management system?
Like an energy management system where you program it, it's, and, as opposed to paying someone else.
Right.
Because if we're paying salaries of people to manage it anyway, um, it would, it would seem like you would get more finite control and you could tie it into other systems in the school to say, um, you can, like occupancy sensors, things, this is other nature.
And we do, so we do have our own energy management system in the buildings. And we do schedule that and run that and optimize it for the best efficiency that we can. Um, the only good thing about the, this contract with Synergist, well, not the only good thing, I shouldn't say that. Um, one of the good things about it is that they do have experts from every field who they'll send here. And you're, you know, you're halfway through a contract, even after you finish paying it, those payments drop off. even after you finish paying it, and those payments drop off in year five, we, they are still at our beck and call if we want to say, hey, can you send your boiler expert from Minnesota out here to, because we need to look at some of these, some of the boilers, they send them out here. So as long as you continue the program, they will continue lifetime support, so...
To answer your question about that, and I understand what you're saying, Don.
Yeah.
The technology is increasing so much and you see that in the building studies. But it is very expensive, technology. And you see how much we spend a year in energy. The money we spend a year, we're going to have to use so much energy to heat and light the buildings.
Of course.
You have to look at the trade-off, how much it's going to cost us to do exactly what you said. Quite honestly, it could be cheaper to have a person do it than doing it automatic. But that's if the person's effective or the team's effective and that's building that culture, the energy culture. And I got to be honest with you, I find a fascinating culture part of it where we're teaching our children what our habits are.
Right.
And it's amazing how you can still leave an office with the lights on and go for hours someplace else and not even think about it. And yet you can have the switch that turns that off automatically. And of course, they fail also. But, but I, I understand what you're saying and it's something...
It's a generic, it's more from a board, a board's perspective is, where do we want to put our energy? Where do we want to look at putting our money going forward? Do we automate it more?
Correct.
Since we already have people to manage it on staff? Or do we, we go with an outside person with maybe? There might not be an answer today, but it's something that we'll want to revisit when we come to that point.
It is something that you'll want to revisit with the technology that's going on. The controls that we have in our building, they're, they're old and it's something that's going to be, have to be addressed eventually soon anyway, so it is something that you will want to look into.
And I wanted to, you had mentioned that thirty percent of energy is wasted, right? So here we're controlling lights going on, temperature outside changing, when our thermostats go on, when they go off. How about, where, are we leaking air out of windows that maybe need that film because there's some that don't have it? Are we looking into those areas to see what's really...
That would be the optimum savings, thirty percent, trust me. And you would have to do everything perfect, but we're going to each of those, just like that, just like Sapphire has that sun coming in the second floor and overheating it. We already talked about having the film put on those windows. That will help insert...
That's part of the facilities.
Right. And there, there is a lot of opportunity still in this district.
There's a lot of opportunity.
When we walk around, we've found a lot of opportunity that can be addressed, so there's, there's much more savings to garner here.
Have you noticed though, because I was going to bring that exact example up, as a parent volunteer going into the buildings and we hear this a lot, I'm going to use Sapphire and Pine Tree as the examples because those are where my kids have gone, where you can go in one classroom and be freezing and the other classroom, they want to have like a tank top on. So have you noticed with the changes you've been making that some of that isn't as drastic?
We're, yeah, we're, that is not unique to this district. That is very, very common in this, the age buildings and school buildings in general, especially when you take a building and you split it, you split up bigger rooms into offices and stuff like that, very common. But we, we have a really great maintenance staff here, people who really know their field and we're, little by little, we're starting to, instead of just Band-Aid things and put out fires, we're starting to actually repair them the right way. So, and that, that is our goal, to have everybody comfortable and, you know, for instruction time.
Our age-packed mechanic, Jack Rallo, has done a lot of good work throughout the district to do, to just solve just those things in Pine Tree and Sapphire. And he continues to do them. He's only one person.
Right.
But that's why, that's why the audits are so important because these guys who work during the day and fill, you know, do work orders and everything, they're not here, they don't know if rooms are still heating at night. They don't know if something's malfunctioning on the weekend. So that's why it's really important for us to be those eyes and ears in the buildings when people generally aren't so that we can find these things and we can take care of it before it becomes a bigger issue.
Is there a way that we could see the report of all the things that you find that are going wrong that need to be updated or fixed? I mean, maybe we don't need to, I don't know, no, I'm not saying every day or, you know, once in a blue moon here, every two months or so you can submit a report saying these are the things...
Yeah, we could do like quarterly reports or something for us.
Maybe a quarterly summary.
I mean, just for, for facilities, we want to know if there's, you know, a hundred light switches that need to be changed. Maybe we should look in to get the ones that shut on and off automatically instead of paying the electrician to change the outlet.
Yep.
Maybe we should put the updated light in there. It might be a couple dollars more now, but it's going to save us in the long run, so we can maybe make that decision as facilities.
Can we just finish this, save your questions so that we can get to the end of this?
Yes. Just another visual graph showing when we came on board in March, do you see right there towards the end of the graph how it shot right up because, because we're really, we're going to take advantage of the program that's here and we just really want it to be very successful, so...
And the energy specialist before us did an excellent job also. I want to quick point that out. He did an amazing job starting the program, but when he wasn't here and after he left, you can see on this chart just what happens with the energy savings when you put the time periods in. So I want to, I want to commend him for what he did and I think Jill, Jill and I are able to double the effort.
Yep, well, there's two of us.
Mm-hmm.
So, so far, the, the program has saved 25,664 MMBtu. So you're like, great, but what does that mean? So, so you can relate to it. That amount of energy is equivalent to 1,414 metric tons of CO2. That is about the amount of emissions that 141 families would put out in, I'm sorry.
In a year.
Yeah, in a year. So, I mean, that's a lot of CO2. Two hundred ninety-five passenger cars not driven for a year. That amount of emissions is what this district has prevented from being put into the atmosphere so far and that many tree seedlings grown for ten years. So even if you're not saving the amount of energy you want to yet, we're not quite there yet, you're still doing really good things for the environment and that's something to be proud of, so...
So the future for us, we're going to keep working extremely hard on identifying the problems, working probably with the buildings and facilities committee with Patrick, giving him our opinion. Jill has already applied through Synergistic to make the middle school our first Energy Star building, which I'm sure it will become.
We're waiting to hear back.
Right, and then each of our buildings, as we get them up to speed, will become Energy Star buildings. From that point, we garner more funds back to the program. Once we're in the Energy Star program, hoping to receive or at least apply for the grants, all right, and get them to come back to us. The key here, when I saw the amount of CO2 we prevented from going into the atmosphere for our children and our grandchildren, that's a payoff that doesn't have a price on it. That's priceless and we all know that. And speaking from my own sense, we, it just doesn't come automatic. We have to try at this every day. And it shows just the character of our school district because we care. Other school districts can't take on programs like this. Either they don't have the staff or they don't have the willpower our district does. And the stuff we're teaching our children is our habits and so we're showing them how to do it.
Energy Star, Ken told you we applied for...
And there's no question here that we have been received very well by the school district, not at all. Our administration, to our principals, to our teachers, to our buildings and grounds, to our transportation, to our facilities, everyone.
Well, and it takes everybody to implement a program like this.
Agrees that we need to do this. So when we ask them to do that, they are very willing. They really are, so I want to commend all of them. We can't thank them enough. No one has thrown anything at us, no one has yelled at us. It's really good to go in the buildings.
Thank you. Any leftover questions?
I just have one more. You mentioned that with, there's no oil. We're not using the oil any longer?
We have oil in, the Ed Center has oil and, is that it?
We have the capability still, but we're going over the gas.
I did, I thought we had like a dual system.
We, we were interruptible. We changed that in some buildings so that, I mean, because now with the, with it just being gas, we get better...
Well, because it's cheaper. Well, it got cheaper, but what happens if that goes up again? I mean, we still have the option or we don't?
Oil goes up again.
We do.
We have the option.
Well, if it goes up, it goes down. We, you know, we still have those options, right? And we're still going to use those options, no?
Together.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I just want to point out, if he's looking for another project, we'll take on the new board member. He can come and watch.
There you go, Dan.
I like his enthusiasm to use that program.
Yeah, you should take him on and all that.
I think so. And then he could report back to you as a board member, just a thought.
There you go.
And obviously, as Don was saying, there's, if, there should be especially communication between you guys and the facilities committee as they go forward with a strategic plan and with Patrick and, and everybody. We could, you know, if occasionally the board could get summaries of the joys and sorrows of things, that would be great, but perhaps a little bit more nitty-gritty can go to the facilities committee and obviously to Patrick. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel, Harry?
Sure, tonight on the agenda, we have a variety of personnel recommendations covering resignations, appointments, certified and classified, additions to DASC coordinators, peer evaluators, lead evaluators, translators, appointments for positions as coaches, intermural advisors and a host of other things. I'd like the board to move the agenda and then, after approval, any of the new appointments in the audience, if they would stand, introduce themselves and the positions that they will be taking for the district at this point.
Motion.
A motion?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of passing the personnel agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried?
Carry.
Okay.
Somebody here?
We do have, I see Juliana, do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Juliana, first coming in from high school at the...
Welcome.
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 So, Amy, Pine Tree, and teacher, Margaret.
Thank you.
That's it?
The Pine Tree Garden is still on your roster, isn't it, Tony?
It is, yeah.
I was, I was worried there for a minute. All right, so that was, that was passed. Business and financial, Patrick?
Okay, I would ask for approval of the items under the business and financial section of the agenda, which include our standard monthly financial reports, budget and revenue status reports, treasures reports, check register, budget transfer report, our investment of funds report, et cetera. We have two donations tonight, $500 donation from Walmart to the Pine Tree Drama Club to help defray the costs of their drama production. And we also have a $2,000 donation from the New York Jets High School Coach of the Week program awarded to our very own Ryan Baldock and I believe our athletic director, Lori Hock, is going to actually read a statement from Ryan who could not be here this evening, although he would like to be here.
Hi, is my Jim voice, can I stand now?
No.
No.
Microphone.
Nice try, nice try, Lori.
Phil. This is being televised, Lori, for the world.
I can do it. Okay, on behalf of Ryan Baldock, I'd like to read his statement that he's prepared for this evening. He said, "Good evening. Tonight's acceptance of this award is truly humbling. I would like to start by thanking the New York Jets organization for all their continued support of high school football across our state. This award may be presented as an individual accomplishment. However, the reality is that couldn't be any further from the truth. This award is a testament to efforts, commitment and extensive support of many, many people. To Mrs. Rodriguez, administration, Board of Ed members, Monroe Woodbury faculty and staff, our coaches, parents, and most importantly, our players, thank you. Thank you for making Monroe Woodbury one of the most respected and revered school districts in our entire state. Working here is truly an honor. Ryan Baldock." And I'd also like to say that in receiving this money, the New York Jets had a stipulation that the money needed to be spent within our football program. But Ryan and the rest of his staff are trying to find a way that all of our sports programs can share in this award. So he, he just is the epitome of teamwork. He's not just teaching that to our kids. He's that guy, so I appreciate everything he's done and he really deserves this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one obsolete item, a vehicle, 2002, with 95,000 miles on it. We have one contract, agreement with Gold Shield Elite Investigations, approval of the budget calendar, which is very similar to last year, and a SECRE resolution for the Smart Schools Bond Act, which is a type-two declaration, which just means essentially there's no environmental impact by this project, which is essentially a cabling project inside our buildings.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second. Did any questions for Patrick? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I seek approval on the recommendations of the committee on special education and special preschool, preschool special education. Those would be agenda items 14.1, 14.2, 14.3, 14.4 and 14.5.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, did all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports by board and central office, Michael.
Thank you to Mr. Cotto for hosting such a wonderful evening. I mean, very impressive. This is my second one and it's, you know, very humbling and what a great job everybody does, the kids, the administration, the teachers, terrific job. Thanks to the presenters, Dan. Excellent job, kiddo. Well done. Ken, Jill, very informative, thank you. Congratulations to our football teams, girl soccer, Excellent job, kiddo. Well done. Ken, Jill, very informative. Thank you. Congratulations to our football teams, girls soccer, boys soccer, for excellent seasons. Special congratulations. I know we always welcome and congratulate teams, but an individual, Kristen Lebowski, Lebuski?
Lebeski.
She won the Section 9 diving title, first one since 1997. She's a great kid. Got to know her a little bit, and special congratulations to her. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you. Chris?
I want to thank Mr. Cotto also for having us here tonight. You did a great job. I want to thank all the schools for all the thanks, even though we're not, like we said before, we won't do this for the thanks. I appreciate it and like to see all the children. I miss, my oldest is in middle school now, so I miss all the little kids running around. I do try to go back to Pine Tree now and then and see the happy, smiling faces. I will be going tomorrow to see the Annie play at Pine Tree, so I'm looking forward to seeing that again. I want to thank the middle school for the breakfast this morning. It was a great little event. I got to firsthand witness the garden. It was really a great job. Appreciate it. I just want to wish everyone a Thanksgiving. I don't know why Hassler didn't have a presentation tonight, but everyone else had a great presentation. Appreciate everyone else for this presentation. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
You haven't gotten to this end of the day.
That was the key.
You guys are speaking, I'm just kicking more notes.
Why it's a happy Thanksgiving. Don?
So Frank and I attended the Mid Hudson School Studies Council last week, which was very informative. One of the things that we learned was if for some reason something in the school doesn't work, the costs that are associated with it were pretty staggering. There was a presentation on that that was really good. The middle school breakfast this morning and all of the thanks today was outstanding. And then, as already mentioned, we went to the New York State School Board Association.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you to Mr. Cotto for hosting us and want to thank all the schools for their appreciation and especially that garden. In the middle school, it's gorgeous. Thank you so much for that. I do have one request for next year. Please provide us with tissues because you had me crying my eyes out. It was just so touching. And I love seeing the kids and the performances. Dan, thank you for your presentation. And Ken and Jill, thank you. And I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Daniel?
Same thing following suit, Mr. Cotto. Excellent job with the meeting arrangements. Everything went off without a hitch. A couple of things, I'll say I'd like to thank you to the schools and the building principals, faculty, and staff for showing these students that all of you represent and all of us represent and just seeing that, all the work we put in is definitely going somewhere good. I attended the Scepter Bazaar at the high school a little while back and introduced myself to the leaders of Scepter, just telling them that their Board of Education appreciates all that they do and they extended their thanks for everything that we do for them. I am going to be attending the Annie play, not tomorrow, 9:30 in the morning, but on Friday. I'll also be attending the basketball game. Getting ready to see Mr. Cotto in the basketball gear. And then also attended the school climate and Narcan meeting with Dr. Hassler, is very informative. And then also, I forgot to mention my presentation real quick. We did do an update on the climate. Ms. Rodriguez, your homework you gave me. I got a chance to sit down with Mr. Flanagan and Mr. Kravitz. I know there's some way here. And the one way we decided to go about with displaying the climate survey was to do it over a two-day period of the gym classes, because every student has gym. And basically book out the lab, book out the computer lab, get a bunch of Chromebooks in, and have the students participate in the climate survey there to only waste two, not waste, only to utilize two days of physical education class and go from there. So that's my homework. Also, FBLA, the Feature Business Leaders of America, we got invited by Deloitte and KPMG to attend the 47th Annual Tax Forum at Lehigh University this Friday, and we'll be attending, and it should be extremely fun. And besides that, thank you very much for letting me present, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, and welcome again to the board. You're a wonderful addition.
Thank you, Leah.
I'm really so happy, we're all happy that you're here. Really. Leah?
I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Gargav?
Well, thank you, Mr. Cotto. No matter what Mr. Kravitz say, you're still the best. I thank all the principals. It was really touchy. The whole piece was really awesome. I attended a couple of events in the Red Ribbon Week, middle school decorate the door contest. It was really awesome to see that variety of different ways the kids and staff really come up with innovative ideas. Also, I attended the Anti-Bullying Parade at Smithville, Mr. Berger and Mrs. Ricker. Great job. And special thank to Mr. Di Giovanni. He was awesome. He kept the kids engaged, and it was just fun to see him.
Thank you. Patrick? Eric?
Thanks, North Main, for being awesome hosts. Thank you to all the principals, all the staff, students for guest presentations recognition. It was awesome. November 1st was the DLC and Health and Wellness meeting, and as Dan said, we had a lot of very provocative topics that were discussed at those meetings, and there's going to be a lot more to come. I did the school climate presentation that was done at the last Board of Education meeting, again at the DLC, so there's a lot of things that are in the works related to that. I attended the High School Prism Concert on November 5th at the high school. It's awesome. I mean, by far, just absolutely unbelievable. My kids came and they loved it. The music department's tremendous. Mrs. Rodriguez and I went to the Monroe Senior Center, and that's where we got the idea originally for doing the Board of Education recognition. But it was the Athletic Club that did their annual luncheon for the senior citizens there, and it was fantastic. The cool thing is it's November, and already we're having an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of our kids. We had eight students sign their letters of intent to college today for various scholarships, which is absolutely awesome. Interact is hosting their spaghetti dinner tomorrow night, so please, everybody, come out. That supports our Interact Club at the high school. As Mr. Vias mentioned, we had our Red Ribbon Week photo contest on the middle school website. You could please, 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 please vote. There's a national contest. It's online voting, so you guys have your laptops open. Please don't close them. You can get on and vote and, you know...
What is this for?
The middle school submits a Red Ribbon Week photo contest, and it's a national competition, and our photos are posted. You do a search for Monroe. Not that I'm telling you to vote for Monroe. You can vote however you like.
Vote for Monroe.
But the Monroe entries are particularly awesome, so you should go and check it out. St. Jude's Basketball Game on Friday night and Save a Life Drug Forum at the high school on December 13th. Information is on the district website. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Now, Patrick.
I just want to thank all the students, staff, and administrators for the gifts tonight, the performances. Everything was excellent, outstanding. Ken and Jill, thank you. You guys did a nice job. You're a good team. You complement each other very well, and I appreciate your efforts in the energy conservation program. And the other thing I wanted to mention is I attended yesterday an all-day meeting of the Orange Ulster Health Plan, which we're a part of. The plan is experiencing some unexpectedly large increases in claims and prescription drug costs, like many health insurance plans nationally, so it wasn't good news and it doesn't really bode well for next year in terms of the budget, but more on that later in the year.
As things develop.
When we get into the budget season. Yeah. That's it.
Thank you. Harry?
I'd like to thank Mr. Cotto for his hospitality. I'm not going to go to the game on Friday night. I saw Joe play last year. I also saw Mr. Kravitz play last year. I'd like to thank the students and staff for their presentations to the board this afternoon, this evening. I was at the New York State School Boards Conference for a couple of days, as mentioned previously, and as the presider for the presentation that Dr. Hassler, Mrs. Rodriguez made, I do want to say it was an excellent presentation, very well received by the people in attendance. A true honor to the Monroe Woodbury Central School District in that the way they presented the school climate survey and the impact on the district. I'd also, I attended the breakfast at the middle school this morning and the garden, amazing, just simply amazing garden. The video was great, but to see it in person and see the bricks with the names of the individual board members and the tree that's dedicated to Elsie and the tree to the secretaries also, and a little bit of a nose for the rest of the cabinet members. I attended the National Letter of Intent signing this afternoon also. I also wanted to make a comment about the presentation by Ken and Jill. Yesterday, we had administrative council in the morning, and I was downstairs and I had to run up to my office for something, and when I did, my office was dark because one of the two came in and turned out the lights, since I was at administrative council and having knowledge of what administrative council, how long it takes, the individual went in and turned out the lights, saying, "He's not going to be back for at least two hours." So my lights were, my office was dark when I got back. I am looking forward to seeing the production of Annie at Pine Tree tomorrow, and I'll finish with wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
We're thinking of keeping your office dark, if that's all right by you, Harry. It's going to save a lot of energy and reduce a lot of hot air. I love you, man.
It's all good.
Lorraine?
Yes, I'd like to thank Ken and Jill as well. I think maybe I should hire them, because when I go home, my kids think that I own O and R. Every light in the entire house is always on. They're not learning from anybody, but I mean, I'm very about ambiance. All my lights are off, they put them all on.
Terrific.
I don't know if they're afraid of the dark or what. Thanks to Mr. Cotto for hosting, and thank you to the students. I love this night. It is just so heartwarming, and I thank the teachers and the administrative staff as well for the lovely gifts. Welcome to the new hires. Eric said everything that I wanted to say.
He usually says what everybody's going to say.
Yeah.
What happened?
No, no, he says what everybody's going to say. We're just going to have Eric do the report at the end from now on.
I want to congratulate the kids that, their letter of intent that they had signed. Congratulate the athletes, all the athletics. I attended the Monroe Peace Theater in the high school, which was wonderful. Those kids are just incredible. They did four different plays, and I have to tell you that The Crucibles was just unbelievable. The Save a Life is on the website. We will have a meeting on November 22nd. There's, we're forming a coalition, so there are students that are present, there's stakeholders, there's the PTA, there's the law enforcement, Mr. Wilson. So we'll be meeting, this is going to be a monthly, and we're going to try to continue with the Save a Life. This time, Monroe Police are actually starting it for this time, because we've been doing it the last two times. So it's like whoever's going to take the ball and roll with it, we're just going to partner with them, because it's really a community issue, and it's very important that we bring everyone together and help each other. So I'm excited that December 13th is that forum, and that will be specifically on heroin. It's not just a drug forum, it is specifying and the frustration of what's going on in this community, and we all share that same frustration. Let's see. I think that's it. And, oh, when Eric mentioned about this picture, and I don't want to get on Mr. Barone again, but I have to tell you, if you submit the picture of him in the ballerina outfit, that may win.
Yeah. It doesn't expire till tomorrow, so I make, you don't have a deal to get in.
Maybe you can get that picture in.
All right.
And happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. Stacy?
I want to say thank you to all the presentations tonight, to Mr. Cotto for hosting. This is obviously my first time here, and I agree with what John said earlier, that I certainly didn't take this position for the thanks, but it is appreciated. I really did take it for the fact that when you see all the kids and all of the great things that are happening in Monroe Woodbury, and I have to say that in the short period of time that I've been here, there really is a lot going on. I think I could probably go to an event just about every single day, and I feel horrible that I can't get to all of them. Thank you to the middle school for hosting this morning, because that was wonderful. I was able to attend the breakfast and the garden, which I think is great. Certainly looking forward to visiting in the spring when everything's in bloom. And I'm looking forward to the Annie production at Pine Tree tomorrow. And I'm sorry that I can't make it for the basketball game. Based on the amount of hype for it, I'm upset that I won't see Mr. Cotto and Mr. Peterson in their shorts, but I wish them the best.
It's okay. It's okay. Don't worry about it.
It's a great night.
You're not. You're really not missing much.
I'm leaving.
I hope it's a great night. It's for a great cause. I want to welcome the new hires, and I look forward to having Mrs. Leonie for my daughter for X-Band. I think it'll be a very great addition. And to all the athletic programs and the music department and the theater department that have just been doing great things, and have a great Thanksgiving.
Anthony?
I think Jill and Ken have already started with the energy.
They have. The lights are shutting down.
Unless they're giving me a hint, they don't want me to speak too long, so I'll try to make it quick. Thank you to everybody. This really is the best night. I think everybody on the board feels the same way. This is the most fun every year that we have here, and we're very, very appreciative. Thank you, Mr. Cotto, for hosting this great event, and really thanks, everyone, for all the wonderful presence and presentations that we had tonight. I had a chance this couple of weeks ago to attend the football game with a couple of people and the staff up in Middletown, where we were successful that night. Unfortunately, the next week, we weren't as successful against Newburgh, but a great season, and Coach Baldock should be congratulated. Same with the girls soccer team and the boys soccer team, really great seasons. Our whole athletics department is just doing wonderful. I also had a chance to attend a, also with some of the people on the board, a book reading down in Rockland County, The Curious Case of Curious Joelle, which was very educational and enlightening and frustrating, all at the same time, but still a great, great event to attend. I also attended a Orange County School Boards Association meeting where they spoke about the Legoland project, and essentially whether or not it gets passed is still up in the air, but if it does get passed, the Legoland team went to great strides to say that they really want to partner with a lot of the educational districts in the area. They really are focused on STEM activities, and they're donating a lot of money to Goshen, but they're also going to make discount park passes available to all educators in Orange County, and they really want to partner with a lot of the school districts to utilize their facilities for class trips and other education activities. So if it does pass, it's something that we should all consider. Other than that, I'm trying to go to the St. Jude's Basketball Game later this week, and thank you all, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Dan?
I got to sit next to Anthony at the football game up in Middletown. I want to thank the football team for the beating they gave Washingtonville. It was extremely entertaining. I got to go see the Fall Classic hosted by the cross-country team. Really nice to see them trying to bring in the elementary school students into the fold, get them interested in cross-country. With regards to tonight, it's a fantastic evening, not for the gifts that the board gets, but for us to be able to, you know, just see the students and renew why we're here, that everything we do is for the benefit of the children of the community, children of our district. And it's really touching to be able to be part of it and to give back to the community. Other than that, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Dan. Elsie?
I want to thank Mr. Cotto. I've known Joe for about 16 years now, and I know that this was a lot of work, and he is a perfectionist, and you did an excellent job. I also want to thank everyone who presented this evening, the students, the staff, the PTA. This means a lot to us, and I want you to know that for those of us that are sitting on this side of the table, every decision we make is in the best interest of our children. And you need to believe that, because every time we sit at the table to talk about a decision or major decision, it's always going to be focused on our students. I also attended the football game, and unfortunately, we lost, but I will tell you that I am learning a lot about football, because Lori Hock is teaching me everything I need to know.
It's not round, you know.
No, it's, I did, yes, thank you. Although we lost, I really felt like we won, because I'm extremely proud of our students and our coaches. They played a really good season, and there's always next year. I also want to congratulate our girls cross-country team for winning the Section 9 championship. Every year, Coach Goodwin brings the girls to the building, and I get to take the congratulatory picture, and I'm very grateful to him for that. I also attended the Monroe Senior Center, where our athletes served and spent some time with our seniors, and that was also really nice to see. I just want to mention something. When I attended the NISBA convention, I sat in on a presenter who spoke about research that identified three factors that influence student success in college. And this is really important. They said there's three things that determine whether a student is going to be successful in college. The first is good attendance. The second, if the student is involved in community service. And the last, if a student graduates from high school with at least 15 college credits. I leave you with that, because in the next coming months, you're going to be hearing about some of the things that we'll be doing at the high school to provide our kids access to college credits. We want every child in Monroe Woodbury to be successful, not just in our high school, but when they leave us, when they go off to college, or if they choose to go off to work, or they choose to join the armed forces. It is our responsibility to make sure that every child is educated and ready for the world. So I just want to let you know that in the coming months, we'll be talking about courses that we're going to be offering to our students that are accelerated, that give them college credit. And on that note, I want to thank you, and have a good night and happy Thanksgiving.
I want to say it's a, it's an honor and a pleasure to work with you, by the way, because you identify things that are important. You are not just keeping the ship afloat going from day to day. You have a vision for the future, which is child-centered, and which you articulate well, and which you bring in everybody who needs to be brought in to the process and the decisions. I hadn't meant to say that, but I did.
Thank you.
Anyway, sorry. As everybody said what I'm going to say, Joe, thank you. Thanks to everybody who is still here. Thanks to everybody who was here. Thank you for the recognition. Thank you for reminding us about why we're here, though we don't need reminding. We hold that in our hearts, as I said before. And most importantly, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss Personnel Items.
John, one thing I forgot to mention, Frank, Scalante held a...
Care.
Oh, a care of thing.
Yeah, and the comments that came out of that, we, me, like everybody else, I think we sort of, when it works perfect, you don't notice safety and security, because it's working, but...
Yes. Yes.
The fascinating thing about the meeting that Frank ran was we had Homeland Security coming down. We had every agency. No other school gets that, because Frank runs such a phenomenal program. They all attend it, and the state police are using Frank's program and showing it to almost 160 other schools as an example of how safety should be run. And it was, what a phenomenal meeting that was.
It was excellent. It really was.
Really, really well-run. We're the gold standard because of what Frank is doing for the district.
Thank you.
And they said that about us. We didn't say it about ourselves.
Okay.
I do want to say one more thing, because Don interrupted, so can I just say? I do want to welcome the new staff.
Yes.
You are coming into a phenomenal district. This is a great place. I want to congratulate Eric Lenza. I've known him for a very long time. I'm very proud and very happy that you'll be at the high school.